Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council Meeting of September 29th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C1, the submission of minutes from the town council meeting on September 8th.
Motion to approve the previous minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is public hearing. And this is Nicholas Bolzano of 24 Vernon Avenue. This is a request for abandonment of a portion of Vernon Avenue for the purpose of granting easement.
So before we open the public hearing, as we did at our last meeting or meeting before, I'm going to ask the solicitor to just clarify abandonment. The town is not in the habit of abandoning its roads, but that is exactly how it needs to be worded, but not actually the actions happening. Mr. Solicitor.
Sure. I assure you that the town, if you take action this evening, is not abandoning any portion of Vernon Street. All it's doing, it's granting easement, if you so desire, for a tiny portion, which is approximately six feet deep and 28 feet long, for the specific purpose of providing stairs, access ramp, and a deck. This is an unpaid portion of Vernon Street, but under the law, the only way you can approve an easement, as opposed to a license, an easement, is through this at the end of the process. And when you get to a motion, I will assist you with wording it so that it is specifically applicable only to the reasons that I stated and also that at some point in the future, if the house is destroyed or disappears, burns down, God forbid, that this easement will extinguish itself.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. So as the clerk mentioned, this is a public hearing. He's going to open the public hearing and ask, is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there? Please. Very appropriately, would speak in favor. So if you could please state your full name and address for the record.
Nick Bolzano, 24 Vernon. Wasn't sure if that was my cue.
It is.
But I'm, I think we reviewed this last time. Not sure if there are any questions, but I think the specific purpose was for access. The actual property line is the, in fact, the edge of the house. You walk out the front door and you're immediately over the property line. So there are existing stone steps there now that do not meet code. This is the safest and easiest way for us to allow access to the property. Yeah, become compliant, so.
So I'll take that as you were in favor of us.
Favor, yes.
Absolutely. Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, if you could walk us through a possible motion.
I will do so. That the motion would be to approve the petition as presented to you this evening based on the fact that the council finds that the specific portion of the property over which a easement will be granted has ceased to be useful to the public and that it will be limited to the purposes as stated in the petition for a stairway, access ramp, and a deck. Furthermore, that if the building is ever destroyed, either voluntarily or involuntarily, for any reason, the easement will extinguish itself. I would also add, so that would be the motion, and I'll also add as part of the public record, which is before you, that the planning board has reviewed this petition and they have a recommended approval to the council.
Mr. Chairman, I couldn't have said it any better, so.
I don't think you could say it again, too, so I could.
I, I motion to remove, approve it.
I'll second the motion. Mary.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve as stated by the solicitor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C1, and this is ordinance 2021-17. And this is to increase the number of BB liquor licenses. There is a scribness error on here. It should read from 31 to 32, and this is a first reading.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is C2. This is ordinance 2021-18, and this is for department purchases and procedures for competitive bidding. First reading.
So I know this is just first reading. Actually, if we could get a motion in a second, I'd just like to get some clarity on the record, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to approve. Who would like to speak on this? Just, it's, I know it's first reading, but either Julie or Mr. Administrator or Mr. Solicitor, I'm okay, either way.
I, I can assist here. So as you may recall, there were some charter changes approved by the electorate at the last election. And one of those changes was to make our purchasing requirements consistent with state law. One of the advantages to that is the bidding thresholds change with inflation under state law, whereas under your old charter, you had a specific dollar amount, so it was a little bit antiquated. This way, we can keep up with it. We, we made those changes, but there was a section in your ordinance that discussed unbudgeted items, and we needed to address that. And so this introduction is to basically introduce two things. Number one, the compliance or the mirroring of state law with regard to those purchases, that those bidding, and also raising the allowance from $1,000 to $3,000 that will, department heads will be able to make those requests just because that thousand's been there a long time and unfortunately not much you can buy for a thousand anymore. Julie, is there anything I missed there, or?
The $3,000 where it's most commonly used is our, we're required to get three quotes on any purchases between, under the old ordinance, between 1,000 and 5,000. So this raises it between 3,000 and then the minimum state requirement, which is now the $9,000 to $10,000 range. So that part increased a lot. There was no guidance in the ordinance as a result of the charter change that addressed what happens between 5,000 and the minimum bid. So this is just to align the charter and the ordinance and the policy.
Perfect. Thank you, Julie.
Sorry, Julie, can I just ask you a quick question? Did you say 9,000 is the new state threshold for three bids? For bidding, I mean, or did you say 10,000?
So the, currently for construction, the requirement to bid is any construction over $19,347. And for all other, it's $9,673. So it used to be 5,000 and 10,000, and those are our new numbers. So now between any items between 3,000 and non-construction, between 3,000 and 9,673, we're required to get three quotes.
Thank you for smiling at that number. So we had a motion and a second to constitute first readings. Are there any other discussion? And thank you for that clarity. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D1, and this is Grace Waters, Inc., doing business as Aiden's Pub, 5 John Street. This is a request for transfer of the Class B B intoxicating beverage license to AZJ John Street LLC, doing business as Aiden Cubs, and this is for call for public hearing on October 20th.
Based on all the recommendations, make a motion to call for a public hearing on October 20th.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to call for public hearing on the 20th. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, and also to include that all expenses are covered as well.
If approved, okay, if you got it. Anything else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is Fia Avalanes LLC, 19D Fame Street, request for transfer Class B B intoxicating beverage license to AZG AZJ Fame Street LLC, doing business as Harbor House, and this is called for public hearing on October 20th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to call for public hearing on the 20th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the D3, and this is Courtney Poisot of CP Catering Sandwich Shop, 366 Wood Street. This is a request for a vitaling license.
And she just showed up. I just saw her walk in the door. Yeah, that's impressive. So come on up if you would. And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Courtney Poisot, and the new location will be at 366 Wood Street, Bristol.
So we know why you're in front of the council, but tell the public why you're in front of the council.
All right, so we are hoping to open our second location at the old Wood Street Bakery. We want to be able to do our catering out of there. We would also have a sandwich shop four days a week, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from 11:00 to 7:00. We'll be serving some, some great lunch. We'll have some different cold options in the, in the cold case, stuffed peppers, stuffed shells, things like that, that you'll be able to come in and kind of take home or either have us heat as well. We'll have some different kinds of desserts and things, and it'll just kind of give us a lot of help not having to push all the catering food out of the small kitchen at the pub.
Excellent.
So you're going to have actually food to go, but you just take home and pop it in the microwave.
We lost a lot of historic sandwich shops, as we all know. Golia's being gone, Sam's being gone. So I hope to have a wonderful Italian grinder to compete with those places, yes.
I hope so, because those are missed.
Right, daily.
But also you're going to have like quick takeout, like just grab it and go.
Yeah, grab and go options as well. We're going to do some different kinds of paninis. We don't really have any paninis in town, so it'll just kind of be a couple of different things.
Nice Ferrari.
Yes.
Are you going to have, I mean, it's not, are you going to be able to staff this and everything? I imagine you are.
Yeah, so honestly, I was lucky enough, right? I was lucky enough to keep 99% of my staff all through COVID. We never really closed. We kept takeout. We kept everybody going full time. So knock on wood, everybody's doing all right. We had two new 40-hour hires, so. Yeah, so we're doing well.
You didn't bring any samples tonight, did you?
Tomorrow, tomorrow is our soft opening from 2:00 to 5:00, if everything goes well here.
I believe that's called an assumptive close.
We have another location to put it at. If, God forbid, it didn't pan out, but, um, but we're hoping if everything goes well, 2:00 to 5:00 tomorrow, we'll have a soft opening and we'll have free samples of all our menu items. So we urge all of you to definitely come on by and grab a free, free bite tomorrow from 2:00 to 5:00.
Well, in that case, based on all the positive recommendations, I'll make a motion to approve the vitaling license.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. And let me just say, you've been a wonderful addition to Wood Street, although I'm going to miss Wood Street Bakery.
Me too.
They had some, their party pizza for birthday parties and all that stuff.
I'm working on it. I'm, I'm hoping to have her allow me to at least do that for catering. So I've been back and forth with them. They were very adamant about keeping their family recipe, which I totally understand. I would feel the same way. So where it is in the, the works that I would come up with my own recipe for the party pizzas and, and we would kind of keep those going. Same thing with the party calzones for catering, at least.
But truly, you've been a great addition there and.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
To take over that area.
Thank you very much.
Well, you've done an awesome job and just congratulations on doing this and congratulations on your beautiful baby, too.
Thank you. Thank you so much. She's been wonderful.
So we had a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
We open tomorrow.
Thank you guys so much.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F1, and this is a petition from Susan Randkorn from Road Races and Events, Inc. And this is in partnership with the Bristol Fourth of July Committee in regards to half marathon on Saturday, June 25th, 2022.
How many, this is the fourth, how many times has this been held? I know this is quite a few, right?
I believe.
Did she?
Susan Randkorn is here.
Oh, she is. Oh, there she is. I didn't see you back there, too.
She is. I believe it's the fifth.
Run up.
So this is your 30-second commercial time.
I know. I just decided where I'm going to run cross-country practice tomorrow, though. So we started this race in 2015, so not.
So almost six years, right? Not counting COVID.
Not counting COVID.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to say. Well, it's the sixth annual when there was a whole gap year there, but.
Well, it's my, the feedback that I get is, has been extremely positive, so.
We had to change the course last, this past year. I actually like the course a little bit better because now it's more of a Bristol course than it is a state park course. And it definitely shows off more of the downtown route, which we really like. It was a, who knew there were so many hills in Bristol? Because like every, like we had, it was tough to find 13 miles on the southern part, but there are a lot of hills, so. But we had, we had some great support from Roger Williams from Blithewald with Karen Binder, just great to work with and really like beautiful views of Bristol that you wouldn't get to see unless you were running it because there is parts in Blithewald that you can't get to unless you're on foot, so. And Roger Williams, for that matter, because we do the whole Shell path down there, so.
That's right.
Yeah, really cool.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
What's this council's budget?
Make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F2, and this is Jason Taganelli, and this is from True North Running Company in regards to a half marathon on October 31st, 2021.
Is Jason here?
Nobody's here.
What's this council's budget?
Based on all the, based on the recommendations, make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is Laurie Cruz. I wrote pastor on it, but she's not a pastor. I don't know where that came from, so I'm sorry. And this is for the Christmas Festival Committee. This is a request to use the town property on December 11th and 12th and permission to sell and serve alcoholic beverages for the Christmas market on December 11th and 12th.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, honorable members of the town council and our respective department heads. My name's Laurie Cruz, address to Roslin Ave, Bristol, Rhode Island, and I am the Bristol Christmas Festival's town treasure, town treasurer, sorry, Julie, treasurer, and I am the co-subchair for the Christmas festival weekend. I come before you. Let me, let me just give you just a short history of who we are. So the festival, the Christmas Committee Festival is founded in 1987, and we are a group of volunteer, you know, dedicated group of volunteer whose mission is to host family-oriented activity events for the whole committee, for the whole community and for the whole neighboring towns also and visitors alike to come and join in on our festivities. So with this year, we are planning a two-day event, which we are hope to, we are hoping to recreate a European-style marketplace here on the grounds of the Burnside Building, in front of the Burnside Building, half of Court Street will be, and then we are also renting out of St. Michael's Parish Hall. So we will be having vendors, we will be having ice sculpting done right on the premises here. We are having wood carving done. We are having hut, hopefully, you know, we're in the works of, hopefully that we're going to be able to offer up all of the European-style market fairs. We're having Christmas vendors. We are having cavaliers walking up and down the streets. One of our missions and goals in this also, as we strive to do last year, is for one, you know, we're continually trying to think outside the box. And last year, COVID really challenged us to do that. And then, you know, Aiden left, but I was going to publicly thank Aiden again for the use of the workshop on the corner of Hope and State Street there. So this year, we didn't want to go back inside our bubble, hence talking about their Christmas weekend. In, in lieu of all of the offerings that we want to offer, hopefully free of charge to the community, family reef making, where all of the families can bring home decorative reefs, children's crafts, you know, a little bit of what we offered at the breakfast, but definitely outside of the whole realm of things. Part of our offerings, we are hoping to, and that is why I'm here, requesting permission to continue to seek out with your approval to both of our evenings, our event is going from Saturday, the 11th, from 10:00 AM in the morning till 8:00 PM, and then on the 12th, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So between the hours on the 11th of, between 5:30 and 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, and then between the hours of 4:00 to 6:00 on Sunday, we are hoping to offer up to the community a mulled-type wine or a European, so they say Glock, that is completely new to me, and I've had to kind of be educated on what all of that was. None of these servings would be taking place while any of the children's crafts were going on, or any of the, you know, pitches with Santa Claus. This is something that we are hoping to, able to be able to enlighten, you know, and kind of enhance a whole festival at large with a European-style marketplace. So we, I have had a meeting with all the respectful department heads back in September as far as the use of the grounds. So we are very busy at work, all of Santa's elves, in trying to get lots of sponsorships for this. So we are truly hoping to have no cost done to any of the community members that will be partaking in this. So we're super excited about this.
Sounds very, well, it sounds really exciting, and I like all the events. What is in this Glock?
So from what I, from what I understand, Glock is a, an alcoholic mulled cider. It is like an alcoholic's kind of like on the grounds of a sangria. So we are not looking to have a full open bar. We are looking to offer up a cocktail that kind of fits in with a whole theme of what we're doing. So that is the understanding, and quite honestly, I would love to try that somewhere, but I don't know if Europe is, are they open to us yet? Just opening? There we go. Business expense, okay. Julie, will that fly? Okay. So that is, that is my take of it. But I do believe it does have a very low alcohol content. And we are, we will, if this does get approved by the town council, we will be seeking services done by a licensed, by, by a licensed entity business that is already licensed and prepared to sell this kind of drink that would work with us for that. This is at no profit to us. This is to kind of add to the aviance of what we're offering.
So it'd be a tip-certified, some sort of cater?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
I, you know, thanks for coming up here and thanks for sharing this with us. I, I remember it was a couple of years ago, somebody had actually come up to me and said, how come Bristol doesn't do like a European-style like Christmas festival or market or something like that?
In, exactly. In our planning of this year's event, we really wanted to come back to the basics of, you know, back in the, you know, Halsey-Havisaw days where I've only seen pictures of it, but my, my husband, who is, you know, quotation, a Bristolian, you know, if there is such a thing, you know, he remembers. You're laughing, Barry. He remembers these events with the cavaliers walking around outside. So we really kind of wanted to attempt to get back to our roots and do an event that we can build on year to year.
Well, it sounds pretty excited and I'm, or exciting, and I'm excited to join you on something like that. And it sounds to me like the, it's just a low alcohol kind of.
Absolutely. We are not, it is not our intent to have anybody walking around intoxicated. It really is just to kind of offer up a, like a sampling of, you know, the old European-style marketplace. Yes.
Ask you, so one of the things I'd love to go is like a river cruise during Christmas. You know, I mean, that's like one of my goals some, sometime. So, but as far as the drink go, are you thinking that people would buy it and walk around? Or would they be seated? So a lot of times when we've given liquor licenses for outdoor events, like I'm thinking about some of the church festivals, they are confined to an area. So if you're going to come, you're going to sit down maybe a few minutes. There's going to be an area like, I don't want to use the word beer garden, but for lack of a better term or explanation. Are you thinking that, how are you thinking this would play out in the?
Correct. I totally agree with you. So we would absolutely take and adhere to any recommendations set forth by any department head and how they would want us to go about in handling this, whether or not it be in an isolated area where we may sell this particular item and then keep it within that, that confines of whether it be like tables in a seating area. So I, absolutely, you know, do we want to have people, you know, walking around town with this? No. So we would definitely take into consideration or actually adhere to anything that was set forth to us if the committee did approve this.
I was just wondering what your thoughts were, like when you.
So our thoughts, our thoughts were, so when we were discussing this, you know, in a subcommittee meeting, it was all about the safety and how were we going to kind of contain all of this? And again, you know, all of the powers that be with the department heads will definitely give their insight and how they would want us to do this. But our picturing of this absolutely was to keep it within a con, you know, the confines of our festival itself. We do have Court Street. We do, we are blocking off half of Court Street. We do have some, we are using the parish hall as well. We are renting out that space. So our thought process on it is, you know, it may be, could it be something where we could have heated lamps where people can kind of like go warm up near the heated lamps and enjoy the sampling of this drink? So kind of make it, keep it in that festival, you know, that festive activity, but also, you know, be aware that, you know, we do want to keep this confined to, to a certain area.
Chief, could you weigh in on that, please?
Yes, last year, we worked with Laurie in, in the committee and developed a security and a traffic plan when we were on the corner, when they opened up the holiday festival shop. So I basically Sergeant Vera in the back, we had detailed officers that the town did, the town administrators authorized the town to, department to cover. So we had sawhorses, we had officers assigned on traffic control in that particular area. So we do not have a security plan or a traffic plan for this event. So if it's approved by the council, I would recommend to the petitioner that she make an appointment with my office, and we will develop a traffic and security plan that we will share with the town administrator for all of the departments, the fire department, if we're going to block off roads, and DPW will be their assistance as well. So this way here, we'll have, you know, a plan that works for all. We've worked with Laurie last year and we had good results.
Thank you, Chief.
Here's one other quick question, Laurie. Is this, this is in addition to the first weekend where you're going to do the tree lighting, or?
This is, this is a separate entity, yes. The Grand Illuminations is a separate entity all in itself. And yes, this is the, the next weekend after that.
And you're still doing the prelude to Christmas? Or the businesses do that?
The businesses. It's okay. You don't even know the, the correspondence I get wanting to know if we're doing the, that walkabout this year. And I'm just like, wrong, wrong person. And, and yes, Chief Lynch is correct. We, we have yet to make that appointment, a sit-down appointment. Sergeant Vera has been assigned to work with us. And we have yet, we have not yet sat down with them. And I did just today speak to Dave about kind of, we need to get in touch with Sergeant Vera. Everything has kind of been fluid. When you're planning an event like this, there are so many fluid. Everything has kind of been fluid. Um, when you're planning an event like this, there are so many fluid parts to it. And as they start kind of coming together, when we have more of a solid event and things that definitely starting to come together, that is when we wanted to kind of now get ready to speak with Sergeant Vera on this.
I was gonna say, do you have vendors already lined up for this event?
We do. I have two spots left.
Oh, wow.
Yes, so we have the tangible vendors, which are our Christmas vendors that are going to be housed inside of Saint, um, in the parish hall. And then we also have outside vendors, which we consider our huts, which is going to be the sampling of like European style market. And of course, everything, everything that we're planning, we had taken into consideration of any kind of, you know, COVID planning. So we're taking all of that into consideration, even though we're not where we were, I'm not even gonna say it. So, okay, um, all of our planning, we are taking into consideration all of that.
Mr. Chairman, no, when I read this and I saw alcohol beverages.
Yes.
Plural, uh, it really concerned me, especially the location with three restaurants nearby. But am I hearing correctly that you intend to serve only one alcohol beverage? Okay, and that would be with a limited time? You are not going to be serving from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
No, no, we are looking to start serving on Saturday evening between 5:30, between 5:30, 6 o'clock, um, and then ending at 8 o'clock. That's when the, that's when the event closes down. And then on Sunday, between the hours of 4 and 6. So basically a two hour timeframe. Absolutely not, no. We wouldn't even consider doing that at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Right, I didn't think so. I thought you had said that before, but I, from my clarification and understanding, because you know, it, that jumped out at me when I saw alcohol beverages. I says, I don't think that's the path that I would be supporting.
Well, I'd, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve and refer this to the police chief to design and create a safety and security plan for, to allow the Christmas Festival Committee permission to serve a Glock in the evenings on Saturday, December 11th and Sunday, December 12th only.
Could you add?
I'll second that, but.
Could, could we add for the motion that was proposed from 5:30 to 8:00 on Saturday and from 4 to 6:00 on Sunday?
Sure, amend my motion to that the Glock would only be served on Saturday, December 11th, between the hours of 5:30 and 8:00. And on Sunday, December 12th, the Glock would only be served between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM.
Can I just ask, I don't know for, out of, just to be cautious, can we also put something in there for those dates or if it's postponed? I mean, I know if it's snowing lightly, you know, be a nice little atmosphere thing. But if it has to get postponed, that this would go with it, the approval would go to another weekend or whatever the case might be? I don't know if you're doing a weather thing.
Unfortunately, um, we don't have, a lot of our things are going to be inside. So this is going to occur. You know, rain or shine, obviously, if we have a snowstorm, you know, in, you know, two feet of snow is dumping on the town, you know, for safety reasons, the event would be called off. But, you know, inclement weather, as far as rain, the event, as much as we can do, is still going to occur.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that if they got put to another weekend, that would be covered.
But thank you.
So it was already stated by Councilman Texara, but I just want to reiterate that I too have concerns about this. And it's, it's not about the Christmas Festival Committee, if I can take a moment there. Outstanding work, particularly last year with Santa's workshop. That was, uh, that was a, an extremely important moment for a lot of children. So, and I don't know if you know this, my aunt Dot, Dottie Cidero started this along with Paul Zagarishoff back in 1987. So it's, it's personally near and dear to me. I'm concerned, I, I'm, I'd like for the record to say that we stop here, that it's nothing else than what you're proposing. I'm talking about this year and then also future years, because I don't want it to morph into something else. I love the family event. Um, I walked in, I must tell you that I was not going to vote yes for this. Um, I think your explanation was clear. I think your times are fair. Um, and I was not gonna say yes, but, but the conversation changed my mind on it. But I'm still very concerned because I like the family event and I don't know, I'm, I'm not sold if alcohol is necessary to, to keep that authenticity of a European marketplace. But I'm, I'm willing to try because of the past. What the Christmas Festival Committee has done in the past has been outstanding. So I, I'm, I'm comfortable a little bit to move forward with it. And, and I hope it is extremely successful, but I would like that it stops here. That there is no request for additional drinks next year or expanded or anything else. So I don't care if it's not glog, because I, I don't know what glog is. I looked it up and I still not clear what it is. But if it's something like that, in, in, in the spirit of that, of the holidays, then, then I'm okay. Is there any other discussion?
I'd like to join you with one, Mr. Chairman.
In a glog.
I'll join you with it.
We'll have to figure out like the difference between mead and glock and, you know, wassail and all that stuff. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah.
Yes, we're gonna get in a strange words like wassailing while glogging, so.
So truly, to my understanding, it is like a mulled cider, like mulled wine.
Excellent. Will there be food along with it? I mean, where folks would have some food to consume along?
So yes, inside, you're inside of a hut. Those are, those are our, so to say, food huts, and we're hoping to secure, you know, flavored popcorn, gingerbread.
Waffles.
Waffles, there we go. Yes.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dave Scarpino, 932 Hope Street.
Welcome.
And as you can tell, I am excited as Laurie is to do this. So yes, we're trying to have a lot of, maybe some chili or some seafood that we could get from or have a local restaurant provide to us. What we're trying to do is we're trying to enhance the business community. We're trying to bring people out to enjoy this great community. I'm a transplant. I'm not a lifelong custodian. I've been here five years. And it's a fantastic community. We want to enhance it, everything with everything we do. And the other thing I wanted to say, we are partnering with, and we're hoping, partnering is probably a too strong a word, but we've been talking to St. Michael's Parish in Cannon Michael and talking to him, not only allowing us to use the parish house, but to open the church back the way it was back in the day, to do the bell choir, to do the readings, to let people into the building. So imagine, you know, an atmosphere down around Burnside that is welcoming to the community, welcoming to the children, and enhances what this great community is. And that's what we're all about.
Sounds wonderful.
It does. Any other discussion? We should probably vote before you. All right, so we had a motion and a second to approve with all of the requirements discussed, including referring to the chief and his department to come up with a safety plan and those hours of operation and limiting it to one alcoholic beverage now and in the future. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F4, and this is Brian Dwygans for Borealis Coffee Company LLC. And this is a request for one additional class BB liquor license.
Is Brian here? No, okay. So I'm gonna start, if, if I may, on this one is we, I'm concerned about not the applicant, not the coffee place, not anything to do with the applicant whatsoever, is that we recently approved a liquor license for the pizza, wood fired pizza that's gonna open shortly at this establishment or this area. Um, there is a supposed brewery coming in soon that will also have obviously an alcoholic content to it, because it's a brewery. In no way, again, let me say it again, is that I, I do not have an issue with this particular applicant or what they're generally proposing. I'm concerned that there are two establishments that aren't there yet that we're going to put in place that we've already, I'm sorry, let me, let me give clarity on that. We approved the liquor license for the wood fire pizza. We, this council, do not weigh in on approvals for breweries, but that does not lessen the fact that it is still an alcoholic establishment. So those two are going in, they're not there yet. I'm concerned personally of how it is going to negatively potentially affect the neighborhood. We don't know what we've approved of how it's going to affect, never mind adding something extra to it. I am in no way against looking at this in the future, once those establishments have opened and see the impact or lack thereof of the community. I know there, that is a neighborhood, just like all of our neighborhoods, but that's a particularly close neighborhood. Uh, and there's a lot going on there. I would love this, uh, this establishment to open its doors with coffee that they have in Riverside, am I right with that, Mary?
Yes.
River, so.
A lot of farmer's markets.
And, and, yeah, and, and they do a wonderful job there. Um, I would love to see that happen in Bristol. It sounds very appropriate for the area. But I'm, I am, I can't say yes at this point in time for an additional liquor license, because there's too many moving parts already there, but I would certainly consider in the future. Colleagues?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, you're right on target. At this point in time, the, the restaurants, no, nothing is operating there currently. And for the time being, I think we need to get a finger in the pulse as to how the operation will go going forward with the brewery, with the restaurant, with the, you know, the pizza place as well. Also, let's keep in mind that in the same area, okay, we have Wood Street Cafe as a full liquor license. We have Brussels Sports as a full liquor license. We have Cafe Central, the Portuguese restaurant, as a full liquor license. So when we look at that, I mean, we preloaded on the area right now with full liquor license. So before we actually go ahead, I think we need to see the operation there, how this falls in line with everything else in the neighborhood.
Well, one of the things that I, I think, I mean, I think it was a really, I just happened, I don't go here a lot, but I happened to be there a week ago. And I thought, I wish I had another one of these. So, and then I looked, looked at the packet. And, you know, they don't, this is a whole new business concept for them too, from what I read here. And I do think it's kind of an interesting one and something that I think coffee shops and others are looking to go towards. So I, I don't want to just, I understand the concern about the neighborhood and I feel the same. I think what we should do is maybe have a meeting with the developer, you know, and say like, what is their plan? Like, who are some of the businesses that are coming in? I mean, you know, part of this is what, what's gonna attract people to the area, gonna be like restaurants, things like that. But you don't want them to become noisy, obnoxious bars and people just there all hours of the, you know, night into the wee hours of the morning. So I, I understand what we're trying to accomplish and I agree 100% with that. But maybe we should find out, and maybe, maybe Diane, you know, like what is their plan? Like what is their grand plan of what's gonna be where? And is these the kind of businesses, you know, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to see the Unity Park, Unity Park project not be successful because we don't, we're just saying no liquor licenses when the liquor licenses could be, and I'm, you know, I'm not a big fan of liquor licenses, but the liquor licenses could be perfectly fine and acceptable, just as they've kind of come to other coffee shops in, in town that we've had, uh, that have morphed from a coffee shop to a lunch dinner kind of place. You know, beer and wine and then into, um, into regular alcohol beverages. And the thing that I, you know, we thought about, what if we just did beer and wine here? And it's like, obviously, because of the coffee and the nature of your business, then you can't really have the flavor, you know, like the Irish coffees and stuff like that. But I think it would be beneficial for us to have at a meeting or just at a workshop to have the developer come and just see what's, what's going on. I don't want to give in any way, shape or form, um, like a master plan concept to this. But it would be nice to have that big picture, so we know it's coming. And we can kind of think like, okay, they, you know, we're gonna need those licenses there, keeping in mind what's across the street, you know, and in the neighborhood. So I don't know if that's something, but I don't know what my colleagues feel about that. But I think it would be very helpful to see, you know, like who are the people that are getting closer, ready to sign a contract or who want to invest, invest money there and building out their business? Um, so I think that's, I think that's like the next step for what we should do. And, and then maybe give some more thought to like what types of businesses should be there, what their hours would be like, you know, does this, does this place really need to be here? Be open till 10 or 11? Could it be open till nine? You know, something like that. So that's what I would like to see as, as a next step. You know, like rather than just reject this out of, of hand right now, just sort of say, we're gonna put this on hold until we have a better idea of what is the plan for the whole area. I mean, I don't want other people thinking, and Diane, if you have to comment about that.
Diane, maybe weigh in on, are you aware, or Mr. Administrator, are you aware, or colleagues? Are you aware of anything that is, I knew about the brewery, I, I, we all knew about the wood fire pizza. And that's about the extent of my knowledge of the area of, of what I knew was going to go. So I, I, your pro, your idea and planning thoughts are excellent. I, I think it's good. I, what I see in front of us is a request for an additional liquor license. And I don't see it appropriate to approve at this point in time. I don't believe it appropriate to take any steps forward, certainly, as I said, happy to look at in the future. But to Mary's point, happy to, to speak with the developer about what the potential ideas are. Uh, to help us understand what their thoughts are and what may go in. Now, that's no guarantee that there's any additional liquor licenses ever created, right? But it's a conversation that we can have and, uh, because if there are, for example, four other establishments looking for liquor licenses in that, in that area, I'm not saying there is, I'm giving that as an example. That changes the world and, and then it's, well, we'll do one, and this is the one that rose to the occasion, for example. I don't know, I don't know what this council's thoughts are.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to chime in and just say that, uh, I don't think, I'd love to meet the business owner. I think my colleagues do too, and I think Councilman Perla has a, a good thoughts. I'm happy to either continue this or create a workshop to find out what the developer is. But since this owner is new to town, I, um, I don't know what my colleague thinks, but I'd like to have, for, for myself, would like a better understanding of the business and understand whether a full liquor license even needed or maybe even a limited is, can be considered. So, um, Councilman Perla, I'd be with you to, to either continue this to another meeting or create a workshop. So I think we don't have enough information to make a decision.
Well, I guess, like one of the questions I have is, is the business owner or the investor who's trying to get into this place, is their arrival there contingent on being able to have the full menu that they gave us in terms of, I mean, I'm looking at some things on this menu and I, I get a sense of what they're planning on doing. They're doing, like, people sipping on Japanese whiskey, that's $35 a glass, that's my understanding. Or I see, like, you know, Scotch and, and things like that. So it seems to me like it's the kind of place where people will come to sip on, on things like a coffee drink or, or something like that. So are we at risk of losing like this investor if, if there's, if they don't get this full BB license?
I guess, if I may ask a direct question, if it was important, where is the applicant? This was advertised, they came in front of this council asking us to create a liquor license, which does not exist right now. I, and I, and I know that comes across a little strong, but the applicant asked us to create one and they're not here to speak on their own behalf. So I would be willing to continue this agenda item for more discussion. I do disagree that I, I cannot paint a picture on what kind of establishment this is until I hear from the applicant. The, the part I disagreed on is that I don't know if sipping Scotch or I, I don't know if $35, that's a lot of money to me. But it may not be a lot to some, and two or three is no big deal. I guess where my concern comes back to is, and I've said this before, the state approves the brewery licenses. I have a big problem with that because we don't weigh in on what we know as the local area, and that's where my brain goes here. We have Shaw's Land, we have Rock Street, we have Wood Street, we have so many areas of Bradford. And there are so many people that live there. Um, one in particular that I talked to recently that said, it's really difficult to go to sleep there at night. There's a lot of noise. So you say, well, are we adding to that? Now, let me be really clear. I'm not putting all of this on a coffee establishment, please. This is not the applicant. I don't want, but at some certain point, we've gone too far. So I would be happy if this council would like to do so, happy to continue it. I, I, I do think that I'm concerned that the applicant wasn't here to, to speak to us about such an huge part of this. So, um, but I'm, I'm willing to continue. So, but I'm, I'm willing to continue it if this council so chooses to our next meeting to find out a little bit more. And also maybe in the interim, we could reach out to the developer and get a, I don't think we need a workshop, just maybe a, an update about what is potentially proposed and help us better understand what's going to happen and what may be in front of us in the future.
I hear your concerns, Mr. Chairman. I'll take a stab at a motion if you'd like. Sorry, Mr., sorry, did you want to say something I didn't?
Just, just very briefly, why don't you make the motion?
Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to continue this to the October 20th meeting. And I would like to ask the clerk, Madam Clerk, if she wouldn't mind helping us reach out to the developer to get an update on the Councilwoman Perla's concerns in regards to a business, like, very, like a business plan or sort of where the development is going. And then also reach out to the applicant to see if they're available to attend the next, the October 20th meeting. If not, would continue to, uh, another council meeting when they are available.
Yeah, I'll second that, because I, I think it's important to have, I mean, I'm surprised it not here as well.
Tony? I, I think we need to be careful not to let the far side of the bond and weaken bring it back. I have not seen the, the place in operation. I, I supported, you know, the Unity Park. I'd like this be, see it being successful. I look forward to seeing it be, uh, being successful. However, if we have not experienced any operation there whatsoever, what we've seen is construction going on. You know, and at this point in time, I think we need to be very, very cautious to create something that we cannot retract, you know? And we'll be standing here and go, well, when we get a report back from the police, okay, now we got an issue, you know? So I, I think we need to really seriously think, let's wait for the business that are going to kick off soon, pick up. Let's see what the environment is in the neighborhood with the, with the business that will be operating briefly. And, you know, then let's stay, let's move from there.
It may end up.
I would be very cautious.
Purely quiet. It may be, it may be, all of this discussion may be for nonsense, which is truly what I hope, but.
Do breweries stay open at night, like late into evening, you know? Do they?
I forgot what the close time required, what is required by the state, but it is not late in the evening.
So I think what we need to find out from the developer is, you know, like, we have a brewery, but they're saying they're going to be open mostly on weekends and they're going to close by 8:00. I mean, it would be nice to have a general idea, who else they're going after. I mean, are they going after, you know, the Capital Grill to come down here? Are they going after, you know, a banquet hall that, you know, you know, you need a liquor license? I mean, that is, I mean, imagine this is something along the lines of a, like a mall or something. You have to have your tenant, you have to have your anchor tenants in order to go forward. And so it's, I understand the point, especially with COVID and, and, you know, things not getting done on time and supply chain issues. I think they've had some of those at that, at, at that location. And that's part of why some things are not done and open. So we just have to, I mean, I agree with Aaron to that point of, you know, you know, is this like, and I don't think this is an anchor, I don't think it is. But I mean, is this like a prominent spot and this is contingent on this? Which is not always, we don't always have to agree with it, but I think it would be nice to know. And we're over here trying to make a decision like that with very little information from, you know, either the petitioner here or the developer.
Any other discussion? So the motion, second to continued October 20th, and also asking the clerk to reach out to the developer to find out if there's additional information they can share with this council to help us make a better decision or more informed decision.
And, and the applicant.
And the applicant, thank you. Thank you for saying that.
And didn't your thing is that the applicant couldn't do it to put it off to another meeting?
Correct, correct. I think we need to, we need to have a full understanding what their business plan is.
Okay, so we're continuing to the 20th. And if, if it turns out the applicant is unavailable, then to a date in the future that they are, how's that?
Excellent.
Perfect. Anything else? Hearing nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G1. And this is the Fourth of July Committee and it's the proposed membership for 2021 through 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself since I have some members in this committee.
Make a motion to approve as stated.
Mary? So we had a motion to approve made by Tim, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome back, Tony. That discussion was long and hard. I don't know if you heard.
Howdy, was keeping me very busy, you know?
Archie. That's all right. That's the other guy.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G2. And this is the Harbor Commission. This is to fill one unexpired term for the alternate that is set to expire in March 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Bob Hamel.
Second.
Sorry.
That's okay. Second, yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
I mean nomination.
Is there any other nominations? No, because it was a nomination, right? We'll close that. So we had a, a motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to appoint Robert Hamel to a full-time harbor commission seat. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G3. And this is the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee. And this is for two vacancies. One is to fill an unexpired term set to expire August 22 and the other two set to expire in August 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Paul and Michael. And I'm sorry, I can't pronounce their last name and I'm not going to try to embarrass myself on that.
So I'll second the motion.
So the Harvard, Tamulates.
Tamulates.
That's not how it's spelled, sir. So, okay.
All right.
So we had a motion and a second to appoint both Paul and Michael. Any discussion? Hearing?
I just need to clarify which one is set to expire August 22.
Michael.
Paul. Also, we'll put Paul in that first position open. And Michael in second.
Thank you.
Keep it simple.
And can we just say that we had interviewed them at the last council, you know, the last meeting? And they're all very impressive.
They were. So great applicant.
Very good, yeah.
We're lucky.
Mary, you're absolutely correct. That was a great point, is that as we do with all of these, we have interviews usually prior to a regular council meeting. And the second part was also probably even true, is that all three applicants were outstanding. And Bristol has no shortage of great applicants. So, thank you. So if we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G4. And this is the Christmas Festival Committee. And we have the proposed membership for 2021 through 2022.
I make a motion that we approve it. I don't know relatives in this one.
We had a motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you, I'm going to make this one quick, to our board and commission members and everyone that volunteers for the town. This council and this town appreciates it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is H1. And this is the municipal public meeting feasibility in regard to the hybrid meetings. This is continued from July 20.
So I touched base with Chris. He gave us a memo and what he found out. And simply put, this was, as we all recall, was looking at what would it cost the town and what's the process to put a hybrid meeting in place? Hybrid meeting to remind everyone is, this is not a hybrid meeting, right? If you want to participate at a meeting, you have to be here. A hybrid meeting would mean that we could be here, have it on Zoom, for example, and you'd be able to participate from home. So the dollars that are in front of us was approximately $40,000. And I believe after Chris and I discussed, this was, that was kind of an extrapolation from what we currently pay for council meetings. And then kind of taking that out to the next level of additional boards and commissions, which would include planning, zoning and HTC. That doesn't mean other boards and commissions aren't important, but those probably have the most impact and also the most potential attendance. Chris, stop me anywhere you disagree or you want to go anywhere. So we can still put this on Zoom. That means that even though if we don't go this direction, the distinction would be that we can turn on the camera, the microphones are on, but it doesn't require someone, like as you can see, the picture's changing right now, because Mike Davis is back there doing that, is zooming in, zooming out, making sure things are working. And you'd also need someone there to make sure that people could attend from home in the sense of raising hands and all of that. And it's next to impossible to do that without a full-time person or a person dealing with that full-time is probably a better way to put that. Chris, anything you want to add on that?
Paul, no, everything you said was right on point. I think, just like we've been doing for these meetings, we've sat down amongst the other boards and commissions and gone over how they can go and stream meetings, similar to what we're doing tonight with council meeting. I know for council meetings after fact, we get, we upload that to YouTube. We can do the same thing. There is also the functionality to stream it live to Facebook or to YouTube, if you want to add that in later on, so that more people can view the meeting.
The thing about streaming live is that it doesn't require any two-way conversation. So you can set the camera on one angle, the public can watch, watch. And I love that, and I think we all do. The engagement is, is outstanding, right? Being able to attend a meeting without actually leaving your house, being able to see what's going on. So I think we're all in favor of that. But these dollar figures are, are, I think, prohibitive. And maybe in the future, as the world changes and it's easier to do these things, maybe we can revisit it if the councils will. Any discussion from the council?
Just wanted to say, I think the broadcasting on the Zoom opens the audience up and allows for more participation and listening, in listen mode only. But it gets the word out there, and I think that's what we're all about, you know? Public discourse. So I think it's a good thing.
So we just.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just add to that. I, I think that, you know, there will be some new systems coming out that are going to allow this to be a lot easier. And I've heard that some towns and municipalities are already experimenting with things like owl labs and, and things like that to make it so that people can collaborate too in the meeting, even if it's a resident that's in their own house or, or something like that. But I think we're on the verge of that and that's going to be here. And, and, you know, we're the type of council, I think, too, that would be some of the first to embrace that once that becomes available, so.
Can, can I ask us the quick question? And it may be to Mike, to answer. If, does it have to be all the boards and commissions and the council? Or could it be just the council or just the zoning board or just the whatever?
Absolutely. It can, you can pick and choose.
Thank you. So we just need to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks for your help, Chris.
And Diane.
And Diane, thank you. Oh, that's right, Diane, you did a whole lot of work, didn't you?
She did.
Thank you for those three sentences, Diane.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I-1. And this is Town Administrator Contenti in regards to a resolution to transfer town-owned streetlights on state roads to our IDOT Rhode Island Department of Transportation.
This one makes me smile. I know I talked to the administrator going back away and, and the administrator's done a whole lot of work along with the treasurer and the DPW director. Did I skip anybody? Diane, did you have anything to do with this? Any sentences? No? So there was a whole bunch of work done on this.
Exclamation point.
And if we rewind the clock back a few years, this council authorized changing our streetlights over to LED. And those were tremendous savings in our electric bill and a lessening of maintenance and a whole bunch of other things, primarily a cost savings. But Mr. Administrator, maybe you could kind of take us the rest of the way on, on what we're saving here and what the next steps are.
Sure. So all of our streetlights in town were converted over to LED. We pay only the utility costs to National Grid for those. We own the lights outright. We have a contract with a vendor to repair the lights when they're out or to reattach them when a pole is swapped out. So the, the settlement between the state DOT and the cities and towns was that the state agreed to take over the maintenance costs and electricity costs for the streetlights on state roads in every city and town, if the host community upgraded them and turned them over. So the agreement essentially is for us to turn over 274 streetlights to Rhode Island DOT. We currently own them, we would sell them for a dollar to Rhode Island DOT. The benefit of that is from here on out, on the following streets, Ferry Road, Gooding Avenue, Griswold Avenue, Hope Street, Matta Com Avenue, Old Ferry Road and Papa Squash Road, we will not have to pay the utility costs from here on out or the replacement costs for those lights. So Treasurer Gaucha did a, an analysis and we're thinking it's about $12,000 a year. We'd be able to save in utility costs. So, so we think it's a, it's a good deal and we're recommending that the council authorizes the, the agreement to be signed.
I'm smiling because I was involved in the purchase of the lights at the time and also the retrofitting. But I'm so glad that you're closing the deal here, you know, and certainly pass it on and let them incur the cost, you know? And obviously you've already covered, I was going to ask, you know, to go the pros and cons of doing this for the public more so than us, you know? And, but you've highlighted that very nicely, you know? I just have one question. For the maintenance, obviously it's passed on to them, they're going to take care of that. However, is there, do you know of any hiccups in terms like light gets knocked out, there was an accident? You know, light gets wrapped, you know, with tape around the pole, you know? Will they be back and how soon? Any anticipation? Do, do we know from any of the communities that may have already done this as to? It's difficult. I know that's not an easy thing to, to presume that they're going to be there the next day.
Yeah, I, I, I can't anticipate that. And I don't know of any other community that has swapped over already. So I, I, I don't know. I know our residents can still call 253-4100. That's DPW, that's what normally happens. And they, they call in the streetlights that are out. Well, you can still do the same. Our residents can still call if it's a state road, we'll forward it to Rhode Island DOT. The good thing about Rhode Island DOT's reporting software is it's all logged in. So when you do file a complaint with them, it's, it's there and it doesn't go away. So eventually they're going to have to get to it. Sometimes it does require several calls, but they will eventually get to them.
So it's there three times at that point? I'm just kidding. So I think this is outstanding. I think it's a wonderful cost savings. Even if you consider the cost of each light that we paid, it'll be paid back very, very quickly. And then we see massive costs. Wow. We see huge cost savings, not massive, moving forward. I think it's outstanding.
I, I do too. And Mike, I just had a quick question in regards to the agreement. Does it look, look good?
So.
As far as to move forward.
Of course, it's uniform throughout with all the cities and towns. We didn't really have much maneuvering room. However, bottom line is the agreement will do exactly what our administrator has said in terms of the state will take full responsibility going forward.
Excellent.
So we need a motion. Could you help us with that motion?
And so the motion would be to approve the resolution to transfer the town-owned streets lights on state roads as reported to you by the town administrator this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Is there any discussion?
No, just simply thank you for working through the details and make it happen.
Well put. Hearing none, other, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I-2. And this is the Harbor Master Greg Marsili in regards to the church street expansion budget.
Good evening.
Hey. So we're making $12,000 to spending 2.5.
But it's going to be great for the town and the infrastructure.
That was a great response, Greg.
Thanks.
I could not agree more. This is, so let's talk about what's in front of us. This is a request of this council to approve an additional $2.5 million for the Marina expansion. So normally on, if everything was equal, $2.5 million borrowed over the normal time that we've on would probably be cost prohibitive right now, would be extremely painful. Julie, our treasurer, is going to speak on just some of the salient points that shows that why it isn't going to be painful right now. But if I may just quickly summarize, first, Greg, I, I would ask that you speak to, just if you could remind the public, the Marina expansion. First, Greg, I, I would ask that you speak to, just if you could remind the public, the Marina expansion, what does it include? And our timeline, we're hoping to complete it.
Alright, so the Marina expansion includes the fuel dock, which is under construction. Mid, mid October should be finished. The second part of that is the expansion of the church street dock, which will include 79 internal slips. Forty eight of those slips will be for residents. The rest will be transient boaters. The exterior of the Marina is a concrete wave attenuating barrier.
Which for those who don't speak continuation.
So it's gonna stop the wave action. So if you've ever been downtown and the wind's blowing out of southwest at 20 knots and it's a three foot sea rolling through.
So lots of wave and wind.
And wave, wave it'll stop, wind it's not, but it'll stop the wave action, which will protect not only the shoreline. Prudence on ferry dock, the state street dock, the fuel pier into, into the state street boat ramp area at the edge of Thames Water Side. So it'll protect all that shoreline and all the infrastructure that we've already put a ton of money into down at the waterfront. So it'll increase the transient vessels. This year we're having a great year. We're up near $67,000 in transient boaters and moorings, which is up about 25,000 from last year. And without doing the expansion. So, and we turn away, you see the boats down there. You see the hundred footer sitting at the end of the dock. And they'll stay for a week, two weeks at a time. Everybody wants to come to Bristol. So this will help with that on the outside of that, of, of the floats that's gonna stop the waves. That'll, that'll allow the bigger boats to tie up, the ferry to continue service into Bristol. That goes from Proms to Newport.
Greg, talk to this council about the waiting list. So we, how many people do we have and how many slips are available?
So currently we have 169 people on the waiting list, commercial and recreational. This will take at least three of the big boats that are waiting for spots for commercial fishermen off that list into the Marina. It'll take another 45 residents or that are waiting on the list into the Marina. So that'll give us a grand total of about 189 slips.
And there is a massive waiting list when new opportunities.
Yes. I mean, we, they, as soon as it hit the paper, we, we jumped up another 30 in the last two months. So I mean, it's, it's continual, you know, we don't, we don't cap the list.
Thank you. So Julie, if you could, if you could speak to, how can we add 2.5 million dollars to a budget and then still have it work?
So back in, I think it was 2019 when we were, you know, pre COVID and we were before the council talking about our projections that we had done. And at the time we were using some assumptions on the debt service and we were the, the market at that time was suggesting that we should use a 3% borrowing rate. And so those are the numbers that we included in our budget, along with other assumptions. We were estimating at the time that the net income would be somewhere between 250 and 300,000 dollars a year. Based on our early estimates. So fast forward post COVID, cost of construction, delays in materials, we're, we're looking at quite a bit more. Not, not so surprising. We're seeing it everywhere. I think everybody at home is seeing it too. But the, the difference now is that the market, our most recent bond issue, we, which was just in July, so very recently. We saw 1.6% interest rate. So that makes a big difference. I asked our fiscal advisor to run new estimates. He's using a 1.95, but he's still seeing the 1.6s. He's always a little conservative. So if he's using a 1.95 and that's conservative, we're still in a very good place. It just also so happens that we are pulling together a borrowing for the sewer department, which we've talked about at budget time. So I'll likely be before you, maybe even at the next meeting to discuss an upcoming borrowing. So should the council see that we could add this to that? I think it's a, it's obviously a good time, good time to borrow. So what that did though, although it's a good interest rate, it did take away some of our net income. So now our new projections are showing maybe between 75 and 100,000 dollars a year. This is assuming no increase in the fees that were, that are currently coming into place in the spring, I should say. So we did recently increase those fees, but there's, so the, the, the new projections don't include any increase above that. So there's a little bit of room if, you know, our, our estimates, we were being very conservative, I think. So we're hopeful that, that will do even better than this. But if we don't, because once you get under 100,000, it's, it's less room. So we do have some room to, to increase these if needed. So overall, I think it, it still makes sense to move forward with it. There may, might have been more hesitation, except for that we're looking at a decent sized project if we don't do this, which is the wave baffle attenuator. It's, it's, according to Greg, it's pretty much failed. It's gonna need a replacement and that alone is like 1.4 to 1.6 million. So we're looking at a significant cost anyway down at the Marina. So I think that, you know, this is gonna be great for the businesses and the local economy. And as long as we're still, you know, projecting that it's gonna be in the black. Hopefully won't cost our taxpayers.
So a couple of the additional points, if I may. One is that why did it take so long for us to get here? We had applied for a grant. I know we apply for lots of grants and we get a lot of grants. In this instance, we were successful for a $623,000 grant. So that, we could not take the next step until we heard the affirmative and we assumed affirmative and we did receive that. So that took approximately, if my memory is right from talking to you Julie, about a year, right, to, to hear back or was it longer than that? Or Greg, you know?
Well, it was about six months after the grant was awarded to get the paperwork. So we found, we found out early, early winter. And then July 2nd, we finally got the paperwork from, from the state. So.
Perfect. So that along with, and I think Julie touched on it, and I know that we're all thinking the same thing. There's the direct benefit of the revenues from the slips. But there's also the indirect benefit of the restaurants and the tourism from additional boaters, from additional people visiting boaters. And you, you mentioned the wave attenuator, making Bristol that much more attractive to come to on a boat. Even though the way our harbor is shaped, we do get some serious breeze in here. That's gonna make some massive improvements, including the fuel dock. We haven't even talked about the fuel dock and the, the income that's gonna come from that. And again, pulling people in, and I'm speaking for all of us. I think we all feel the same way of the opportunities here. So the net takeaway is revenues are still there. Project's gonna get done because it needs to. And, and even if we don't choose to do this, there's other things that absolutely have to get done in the millions. The interest rates are outstanding and Julie, take a little credit on this one. Is that we recently spoke about our triple A bond rating, I believe, or double A bond rating, which is just outstanding. And that's from hard work of everybody in this room. And I'm taking that moment because that's how we can do something like this and still stay on a project that is so very, very important. So colleagues.
I just ask a quick question for Julie on, on the bond rates. That 1.95, that's still pretty low historically in terms of bond rates. So that's a really super good rate. And so I guess one of the things that whatever concerned me the most is like if there was another year of waiting, what happens to those bond rates? You know what I mean? Because if they start taking money out of the economy, then you're gonna start seeing those bond rates increasing, which could cause the price of a project like this to balloon. So it's kind of one of those situations where if you don't act now and be decisive about this, that you might be looking at some pretty substantial costs later on to finish a project like this.
And the other thing I, I should have probably said, but just for the public is that it was a competitive bid. We got three, three bid responses, which is pretty good for a project of this size. And so, and the low bidder, we're familiar with the contractor. So it's not like we only had one bid and you know, it's much more than.
Listen, I know 2.5 million is a big pill to swallow. Believe me, that, that's a huge number. But the difference is this department is a revenue generating department. And I think with the way it's set up and the project that we have moving forward is going to be an extremely phenomenal change to Bristol. It's gonna make Bristol, it's already Bristol's already on the map, but I'm just saying it's going to make it that much more desirable. We know the fuel station's gonna take off. We know we're gonna be handling the supply and demand of the slips that are needed. So I really think this is, this is going to be a good, good to move forward with this project. So definitely don't want to hit the brakes there. Greg, just one quick question in regards to cost. Any additional cost do you foresee beyond this?
We, I think we added in that 2.5 million, a few percentage of, you know, contingency fund. I, I don't see anything. I mean, it's, you know, it's just not like building a house, right? And I, I'm gonna say this and then I'm gonna come back and tell you I need a hundred thousand dollars, right?
That wouldn't work so well, sir. So just saying.
But I mean, you, you see the waterfront out there. It's, it's a blank canvas. You know, the piles are gonna punch fine. We don't anticipate anything. There's, there's nice mud in there. The concrete wave attenuating floats are on a mooring system. So that sits on anything. The power we, the, the, we don't have to put a new three phase box in. We put that in. We anticipated this when we did the maritime center. So that's there. They gotta dig a trench from, from there to, to, to the, to the dock. So I'm not anticipating anything. I, I can't see it. I think we, we spent, I don't know, I've, I've been here eight years now. So I spent seven years of my life working on this. Not only can I talk to you fluently about it, so can my wife, because everybody stops me in town. I, I think, I think we've, we've crossed every, every T and dotted every I. And I think we're, we've got a good project. I mean, upon approval of this, we can get out, they wanna get going on it, get start, start working on it. We could be open for May, by May 15th and the spring. So we're fully anticipating open. I know the commercial fishermen are happy because they're gonna be able to get some stock spaces back that they need for their larger boats. We'll keep that in town. We'll get the infrastructure protected. So I think we, I think we have a really good project there.
Oh, I do too. And, and I'm also assured that this will not land on the taxpayers, which is a key thing to bring forward here tonight. That Julie, Julie, the way it's going to be structured, the way that department makes money, it's going to bring future revenues in. It's not going to turn to taxpayers, which, which, you know, I'm
Critical.
For, yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Yeah. Am I reading correctly that in this is also the fuel dock? The fuel dock is included in this. Am I correct in that? But it, just very briefly, and just restating where councilman Sweeney man stated was the fact about it's a user fee revenue generator. So you can't really go wrong with, with both of those.
What's this council's pleasure?
Make a motion, make a motion to approve the 2.5 million dollar bond.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to its open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Big ribbon cutting, big ribbon.
We make 12,000, we lose 2.5 million. It's so quick, isn't it? My goodness.
Just gotta hold on to this.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I three, and this is economic development coordinator Chris Vitale in regards to a request for an update on the parking restriction ordinance.
Chris?
Thank you. So over the past year, we've been working with Par and Dambur Construction to do various streetscape improvements on nine streets here in the downtown. Over the past couple of weeks, they've been out there doing final paving and they are set to be completed here within the next couple of weeks. At sort of the final part of the project, something we asked Par to do was take a look at the parking and just make sure that the conditions that are out there on the street right now match what we have in the ordinance, just so that we can have it nice and clean. And finish off the project. There are a couple of changes that they found and identified in the ordinances that they'd like to change. And I don't know at what point these changes occurred, but there are certain places on the road where it says no parking, but people are parking there. For my time and probably before many of your times on some of these streets. I think the plan would be based on resident feedback. A little bit of different type of striping, just to indicate where the parking is. I know that a lot of these streets that they've done work on are very tight, narrow. And so especially at the intersections, having better striping so that people can make some of those tight corners. So that's the reason that I put this in front of you today and just hoping to make those changes to the ordinance.
So it would seem appropriate that if this council agrees, that we could refer to the solicitor to work with the administrator and his departments to create ordinances to correlate either what's there or, or fix what's not. So, but to bring it up to, to reality, I guess, instead of another one. So any, is there any questions on this?
I, I do. I have a question here because I'm not clear. When it says proposed, let's take Congregational Street, okay? And it says proposed no exceptions taken, then it says stripe parking squares and install no parking signs. I'm a little confused when it's saying stripe parking script. Are we gonna actually, you know, draw parking areas on these streets or should we just do no parking? Like on my street, do it's just a don't know parking. So you just park everywhere else that says no parking. Okay. Now, when it says here to stripe parking squares, I'm unclear what does that mean? We're not gonna say, okay, this is where you're gonna park. Because that could be stripes, lines everywhere.
Yeah. So the feedback that we got from residents right now is that parking down there is very difficult as it is. And a lot of the questions that I've received when I'm on the site is, well, why is that there? Or what was the process? And a lot of times I say, you know, we have to just go back and do the research because I don't really know the conditions. A lot of the residents that I've spoken to are sort of in favor of having it drawn out for them. Because what you see a lot of times, especially, you know, I'll give you an example on Shaw's lane is you have telephone posts that are in the road. And so if someone isn't parking really where they need to be parking to allow another car to get behind them, you're taking very valuable parking away from the residents in that neighborhood. So, you know, based on the feedback that we received through workshops, through meetings on the street, that was one of the requests that were made. And, you know, our engineers, you know, worked it up so that, you know, it would be indicated and we can really optimize as much parking in that area as we can, because we know it's tight.
So then you're gonna have to run a straight stripe right through the entire street and then designate no parking, no parking, parking, no parking or no parking, no parking, whatever the case may be. So you're gonna have one straight line going all the way across the street then, from one end of the street to the other. If I'm reading correctly what you're saying, because people not only don't wanna know where not to park, but they wanna know where to park.
So I think on those sections of road, I think we would just indicate where no parking is, I think just better signage than what was currently there. And I think when you walk these streets prior to them doing the work, a lot of it was faded or it was just covered in vegetation. I mean, there was just, the conditions there were hard. And I think again, this was just a recommendation was before by engineers to really clean up and just be able to unwind it better for the residents on the street. So I don't know the exact striping, the exact locations. I'd have to get back to you on that from my engineers.
No, you don't need to get back to me. But, but I'm just trying to pitch my mind. Okay, I, I can dig my street. And I mean, it's very clear where you can park. And it's very clear where you don't park because there's the lines there that clearly say, you know, no parking within that block or that square, whatever the case may be. So, but if it says, but they wanna know where to park, I, I, that'll, that'll be interesting. I can't wait to see that, that's tripping. Because it's, I can see it being very confused, very confusing, I should say, because you're still gonna have to assign the designate no parking areas along with the parking.
But I think that, but I think that that case you would have like, it would go say from here to here. I mean, it's kind of like Main Street and Warren. I mean, I was just there before this meeting. And then there'd be nothing because there'd be no parking. And then you put another, it wouldn't be one straight line. It would just be, you know, maybe a box of four or five cars. And then maybe there's no parking for two cars. And then they, then you pick it up again. Isn't that more what you're talking about?
Yeah. So I can see if I can have the engineers put something, something better together just to.
Maybe as a, as a, just, yeah, so we can visualize it. Just an example. And I think your example on Shaw's lane was perfect. That is a nuanced street. You mentioned telephone poles in the street. Obviously, that's a great example of not so much. So, but maybe they could just take a picture of it and, or just draw something up for the, so we can see as part of this. as part of this ordinance when it comes back in front of us. Because it needs to be referred and then and then each one of these can be addressed through the solicitor and the administrator. Does that work for you, Tom? So we can see what we're getting.
Okay, okay, certainly. Because I've, yeah, let's just do that. Okay.
So is there any other discussion in regards to this? No. So we wouldn't just need a motion to refer to this listener and the administrator to create these ordinances?
So moved him.
Second.
So there's a motion in a second. I'm sorry. And we'll include in there that if the engineer could give us a a draft sketch, something along that line to give us a better idea of what's being proposed. Excellent. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I four, and this is a request for executive session.
We'll take that at the end, please.
Next item on the agenda is I five, and this is the chief of police Lynch in regard to the tougher chief October thirty first, and this is request for council support.
Chief, you're not looking for two point five million, correct?
Five hundred dollars.
Chief, I'm doing good or bad by comparison. Go ahead, sir.
Make that motion for out of our council contingency.
With me tonight, I have Sergeant Fiera, who is the coordinator of the second annual trunk or treat and certainly was who won a concept beside you here. I kind of shut down treating during the pandemic. Sergeant Vera found a methodology to getting, you know, something that provided the COVID regulations and and it was on local news and it really was the highlight. I think Councilman Texera was at the event and saw firsthand. We actually ran out of candy and we were scrambling and bought out CBS next door. It was a huge hit. I don't want to steal the sergeant's stuff.
Welcome Sergeant Vera.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the town council. The Bristol Police is respectfully requesting the council provide some funding to help us with this year's trunk or treat humbly in the amount of five hundred dollars from budgeted costs associated with providing the children of Bristol a safe way to enjoy Halloween night. Last year, as you recall, Halloween was on the verge of being canceled. So the police chief and members of the Bristol Police Department came up with the idea to have a trunk or treat, which was a huge success. It was all over social media and the local news came down channel ten and six. I guess we're back by popular demand and we just need some help with some of the costs associated this year. We're going to have a character show up. Chase from the Children's Cartoon Paw Patrol will be special guest. Some fire agents, DPW is going to assist bringing up some equipment. I have plenty of volunteers. Chief Lynch has volunteered along with his wife, Mrs. Lynch. So I will have them to help me. So we're confident that this trunk or treat will be a success and provide even more meaningful, safe experience to the families of Bristol.
Is this going to be at the police station or is it going to be somewhere else?
It'll be at the police station again.
So even with the, oh, even with all the other added attractions, the touch a truck and all that.
Yep. And it'll be Halloween night between the hours of four and seven. So I remember running across the street like the chief said last minute, get more candy. But it was a great success. And I'm just trying to make it up. Have some add ons, so.
Well, any of us who have ever done the candy stuff down here on the walk, we've all run out of candy. We've all been in your position. We all feel how difficult that is. Trust me, can't you can ever keep up. But I'd make a motion that we provide the five hundred dollars from council contingency.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion?
Is that going to be?
Yes, I would like to kind of propose that because they ran out of candy last year. They were on all over the place. I think we should.
And you were there, no, so they're constantly texting, all right.
Seven fifty.
Yeah.
Are we buying large bars?
Think the year they canceled Halloween is a Tim Burton movie. That's what you said. They almost canceled Halloween. It sounds like a stop motion something.
So we're not going to let it happen.
I I'll tell you, I think it's an outstanding thing. I think that not only is it great for the kids, I think it's also a great way to interact with youth and show that police and the police department, particularly ours, and I'm not going to, I'm I'm going to say that particularly our department is outstanding. And I think it's a great way for children and parents to see and talk with you guys and girls. And I I think it's outstanding. So so we had
Well, so Mr. Chairman, you said it's from four to seven on Halloween night.
Yes, Councilman.
Now, we don't have to have any candy at our house. Then they'll just, we'll send them up to you.
Popcorn as well. So that money will help with those.
I don't have any candy. You need to go to the police department.
We'll be well stocked, yes.
But I just explained you had asked, you know, with the extra trucks. So we're going to line up the touch truck program. And I'm still looking for a race car. So if there's anyone out there that can provide a race car to the event, we're going to line it up along the stone wall from the old greenhouses, you know, along the grass over there. So that's where all of the heavy equipment and the police vehicles and everything else will be. And I think it's up Mount Hill Farm also that donated some of the animals and also agreed to come back this year too. So you know, we're really looking to expand it. The extra costs is ours, bringing in those characters. I think that was like three hundred dollars to bring that in candy DJ event. So we're really looking to expand it.
I have to say, little companies was jealous of Bristol, so they'll be doing that this year, too. Not to the extent that Bristol is doing.
Their council only gave every hundred dollars. That's so. So we had a motion in a second to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I six, and this is director of community development Diane Williamson in regards to the RITM grant extension for the bike path connector.
So Diane, this is just because we're still working on it, we're asking for an extension of the time, simply put. And how long is the extension looking? What are we looking for?
One year. It would expire December of twenty twenty.
Perfect. And that'll give us more than enough time to do what we want to do.
Yes.
Perfect.
Diane, I think this is a great project and I'll make a motion to authorize to extend the bike path connector date.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to authorize the extension by one year. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one, and this is the RFP nine sixty three for the tanyard reservoir flood prevention and mitigation project. We received two bids today, one from Ferrera Construction in the amount of three hundred and ninety five thousand. And the second one from K Corporation in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand, four hundred and eighty six dollars.
Mister Administrator, would you remind this council this this portion of the ten yard improvements?
Sure. So this was a a grant funded through DEM. And it's to manage some of the water that gets dumped into the State Street Reservoir on State Street where the curve is at Magnolia Street. So this will kind of soften that area and do some landscape improvements. But the the goal is to control some of that rapid flooding that enters into the tanyard, broken further down into the neighborhood. So this is going to kind of slow that down, manage it, it'll settle there. But there's also some environmental improvements with the the plantings and so forth. Most of the work is going to be done on the on the east side of that property.
Perfect. Thank you.
I make a motion that we refer to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second, motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to refer to the administrators. Is there any discussion? Mister Administrator?
I'm sorry, but good time to say that if the public ever has questions about these projects, Department of Community Development on the town's website, if you scroll to the bottom or it says projects, it says all projects. If you click on there, there's photos and some of the plans are there. I think State Street Reservoir is one of those.
Excellent.
Also, Wally Beach is on there, too. Somebody called this week asking about it. So they could go on and look at the photos, the
See the proposals and such and so forth. Nice.
Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you. All right. So we had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So next would be a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to forty two, forty six, five, eight, five relative to the acquisition of open space. And forty two, forty six, five, eight, two relative to litigation involving AZA Host and Craft Reese, Russ Russ Realty and Cabral.
What's this council's pleasure?
So moved.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we're going into executive session. We'll be back after that. Thank you.